Here we go. The January 25, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. Our first item of business is to adopt the agenda. Before we do that, I'd like to revise the agenda to remove item number four, review the procedures for the planning board. Since we have no cases tonight, it really is irrelevant to the purpose for which we are here.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda with the exclusion of item number four.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda with the revision to remove item four. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the motion is carried and the agenda is adopted. At this time, we'll call upon Ms. James Harris for her invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this day. We thank you for everyone's safety getting to our meeting tonight. To speak with us tonight is where we have the Rockingham County Planning Board workshop. Help us to review the unified ordinance, give us guidance, leadership, that we may take each step carefully and plan for the county's benefit. Yes, these things are precious things.
We're now at item number 5.1, review question and answer for the 2021 Unified Development Ordinance. Carrie, are you with us?
Here I am.
Okay. Did you want to introduce this area?
Sure. I think the best way to start is to go from the memorandum that Eric sent at the, I guess, at the very end of December, and I can put it up on the screen if that would help.
Please do.
I did not ask Tim to distribute a copy of that. And I'm not sure where Eric is.
I'm here. I'm at the room.
Oh, there you are, Eric. Okay, so I'm going to put, I'm going to try to share my screen and see if this works. You were quiet, Eric, and I couldn't tell if I made a mistake. Are you seeing this?
Yes.
Major changes overview?
Yes.
Okay. So, Eric, can you come up to be, to the podium, just to be closer so we can all be closer together talking?
Sure.
Let me know when you're there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
How about now?
There you are.
Okay.
Thanks. So, I've got this. Can you, can you see this too, Eric?
Yep. I'm here at the podium. I can, I can see the memo, yep.
Okay, awesome. So, is this, this is, and, you know, tell me if you, if you have a better approach, but right now, I think this is a good place to start. And before jumping into this, the process for adopting a land use plan or an ordinance is the same as the process to approve a rezoning request. The difference is in the notice of public hearing, when a ordinance or map affects the entire county, instead of individual mailings, we publish a newspaper article equal to one half of a page. That's what the statute requires of us. So, we are getting familiar with the ordinance today and next month, and then based on your comfort level, and Paul will help lead this discussion and get us through this, it would, at some point, you would adopt or recommend adoption for the UDO. At the end of the night, tonight, you'll be, I think you'll have an idea about when, when you might be ready for that, whether, because I just need to know in time to be able to advertise it. Once you make a recommendation, of course, the Board of Commissioners then will hold a hearing and make their decision. So, the Board of Commissioners have the ordinance now as well, so that they can be reviewing it. They did not yet adopt the land use plan. Paul was there. They, they wanted some, some changes, which were really good. It's great to get their feedback. And we're going to, we're going to hopefully adopt the land use plan. Their changes were, guys, were about anything that seemed to set a regulation and have a quantity, like the land use plan saying something needed to be 300 feet. That is a quantifier that needs to be in the ordinance and not in the land use plan. So, it was mostly a matter of language, making sure that the land use plan wasn't telling us to do anything but just suggesting. Paul, do you have anything to add to that?
Only that Commissioner Charlie Hall, Chairman, said that we were going to have a subsequent meeting to go over some specific in the land use plan, and I have not heard from him yet.
Okay, yeah, and you haven't, they're going to, Charlie's going to appoint a subcommittee that will have two members of the Board of Commissioners, Paul as a representative of the planning board, a representative of the advisory committee, and myself and Eric will participate. The advisory committee is going to meet again. Paul, I don't think I told you this. They want to meet another time before they appoint a member and just sort of make sure that they're on board with anything that's happened since they last met.
Okay.
All right. So, are there any questions of you guys before we go right into it?
Not for me.
Okay.
Members?
Nope.
No, we're good, Carrie.
All right. So, okay, good. So, the first, the first point about reorganization is that's just a suggestion to you to become familiar by looking at the table of contents. I don't know how many of you have typically gone to your UDO in the past, and you don't have to answer one way or the other, but it'd be, it'd be good for this to be a document that is convenient for you to use. So, it's important that, that it's laid out in a way that you can understand it, and the table of contents lays that out. Have we ever talked about the difference between zoning regulation and development standards, guys?
No.
Does anyone ever talk to you about that?
No.
The zoning regulation sets the density, use, intensity of a parcel. So, when you, when you zone something to LI, like industrial, that sets a series of uses, lot sizes, setbacks, dimensions that dictate how the parcels, or how the site will be laid out. In addition to that, or then on top of that, there are a set of development standards that are reviewed administratively, that means in staff, that set requirements for things like landscaping, lighting, any kind of facade requirements we might have, parking. So, there's those development standards that apply to everything, and then there are development standards that apply to specific uses, because a decision had been made that those specific uses should have more or less development standards than everything else should have. Cell Tower is a really good example of that. There's a lot more standards for cell tower construction than would apply to a, even to something like a Dollar General or a, or a, just a retail store. So, those, those standards, you don't see, those are things that we approve as staff, but those things are in this ordinance and will be the, once it's adopted, will be the things that we use to guide our decisions. So, the, I think now we can, we can just move into it. So, we've got the second one. Rather than requiring a specific lot size, we're proposing a density average requirement instead of a, no smaller than 30,000 square foot lot, for instance. So, this encourages smaller lots, but doesn't allow any more lots than we currently allow in the subdivisions that we've historically approved. So, a winsome forest has 172 lots, I think, might be developed with smaller lots and more undeveloped space. It would be up to the designer, developer designer, to design the neighborhood around natural features, around topography. It allows the lots to be, as I said, closer together, and it allows them not to have to mess with features, environmental features, and features that could be an asset to a neighborhood, open spaces. Eric, help me explain this any better.
I think that's a good explanation. Essentially, as noted there in item two, you could cluster, you could use the best parts of the property to create more, to create smaller lots while preserving open space. I think that's a principle that we've talked about with you all here early on.
And then...
Can I ask a question on number two?
Yeah.
So, is that contingent upon environmental health in the septic area, septic field, and then the repair area?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That would come at the, the review of a subdivision. Once, if you were to, if something were to be zoned so that it could be subdivided, it would, it would go right to environmental health for approval of. Lots have to be, I'm sorry, they have to be appropriate for carrying wastewater in a well or for being served by public utilities.
What if it's, what if it's outside of a subdivision? Like, let's just use it, for instance, a point seven, you know, three quarters of an acre lot outside of a subdivision. How does that play into it with environmental?
We have, I'm looking for that.
I mean, the density average is going to apply, but what you're going to find is, when you get into a single lot like that, you're going to, it's much more difficult to have some flexibility, because there's not, there's not variation in the land, right? So, just like today, like, you know, you could subdivide at an acre or whatever, but, you know, I'm really going to need an acre and a half in this area to really make this work on this one lot, right? So, it's not going to be any different than how things are done now, but either way, you're going to be subject to environmental health. And that goes for, say, say you all permit someone to do a campground or some other type of plan development, just like in that scenario, you're still subject to those restrictions. So...
Phil, that brings up a good point. I mean, for a minor, say, a minor subdivision, you know, that really doesn't need very much scrutiny at all, or even a single lot, you said, a single lot or two lots, do we, is that important that we, for a single lot or a size of a minor subdivision, that we have a different lot size restriction versus density?
Carrie?
Yeah.
If you recall, I was the one that originally objected to changing the minimum lot size for a higher density average, and there was a drawing that Eric showed, which isn't available tonight, but I can just give you an example of what we're talking about here. Suppose we have a, an old family farm that wants to sell for development, and it's 100 acres. Under the existing standard, every lot has to be one acre. So, yes, we can build 100 houses, each having a one acre lot, but we've consumed 100% of the farmland. Whereas if we cluster houses in the most ideal section that perks well and, and has maybe the most level ground, and build 100 houses in one corner or one third of that 100 acres, then we've preserved at least 50 acres for future farming, which is something we can't do under the existing ordinance. And the whole idea here in keeping the rural character of the county is to preserve a lot of the agricultural land.
Yeah, and I'll just add, in addition to that, you're creating more flexibility for the developer.
Yep.
And in addition to that, we're also allowing this residential agriculture major subdivision to happen by right. So, it's going to be much easier for the, the landowner to just go right through the process. That way, this board and the commissioners are focused on more difficult, if you will, zoning cases and so forth.
Right. And these are the reasons why I withdrew my objection to, keeping the minimum lot size.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. And I probably have that graphic, and it's just what you're talking about. I just have to, I just have to locate it, but I can, I can share it.
And Carrie...
If we address Phillips, can you tell me, Philip, what you would be, what the concern would be?
Well, you know, I call you all the time with, with certain things that people are asking me. And I guess I'm going back to that minor, you know, four lots or under thing. If somebody, how would this apply? Let's just hypothetically say this is a five acre parcel, that somebody's wanting to subdivide, let's say four acre parcel, they're wanting to subdivide, or, I'm sorry, I'm backing off to three. Okay, three. Okay, I'm sorry. So, it's three acre, and they want four lots. Is this possible under number two? Just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly.
It would be, there would be no minimum lot size, but they would be allowed to get one and a quarter times the acreage, so three lots?
All right, let's say, let's say three acres, four lots. Is that possible?
So, 4105, when we go there, we'll play the scenario out.
I think so.
And I don't mean to get us sidetracked, but I...
It depends on whether, if we're going to round up from three and a half, then yes.
So, are you suggesting that there's no public water or sewer?
Correct, yeah.
So, it's a, it's a, without public water sewer, it's a one acre, one dwelling unit per acre density average?
Gotcha.
So, you could do three homes on that three acres.
Gotcha.
So, we're not going to do 1.7, 1.25?
Pardon?
We're not going to do the one and a quarter units per acre?
The scenario he was suggesting is without public water or sewer.
Okay, excuse me. Yep, then we're just an acre.
So, if you have public water, you could do one, 1.25.
And actually, y'all just addressed my question right there, because we do have some things with public water, without public water, maybe with public sewer, without public sewer.
Yep.
So, three without, four lots with water.
Gotcha. Makes sense.
But yeah, if you did have public water, you would really need, I guess, what, five acres in order to get the sixth lot, or five, five acres in order to get the sixth lot? Or, yeah.
So, just a single, a single lot, one lot, I would interpret the, the one acre lot minimum.
So, you can imagine yourself, there's a lot of flexibility in that. If you've got some good lying land and you could create, you know, a little pump to a septic area, you know, you could potentially have three little homes on a decent piece of property there, you know? So, it's a lot of flexibility, allows for a lot of housing variety. I imagine the development community is going to respond well to it. It's definitely not more restrictive than now. It's definitely a lot more freedom.
Any other questions about that? I'll keep, I'll keep looking for that graphic that Paul referred to. It is, it's good, and it's an interesting graphic to explain how larger lots taking, eating up all the property versus clustered lots, leaving more spaces that are undeveloped. Okay, so the other, the other big difference is that major subdivisions within the AR zoning district would be allowed by right. Right now, you have to rezone from RA to RP in order to create a subdivision of more than, of more than five lots, the way we have it now. So, this is, this is an interesting point that when Eric first started looking at it with me, and was, we were trying to figure out what, what, you know, what, why, what was the reasoning behind this? Having a separate zoning district for subdivisions and calling it residential protected. And there were a lot of different reasons. The biggest difference between RA and RP is that manufactured homes would not be allowed in RP without a specialty use permit. So, it's not...
Yeah. It was an interesting way for, for the planner at that time to address trying to prevent manufactured home, major subdivisions by right.
Yeah.
And then rather than pulling that use from RA, they made everyone go and rezon, whether or not you're going to do manufactured, or whether or not you're going to do, you know, standard stick build.
Uh huh.
I don't see, I understand the planning logic. I mean, if you took the approach of the RA is going to be for very strict, you know, no development, but that's just not how the real world works. People, I just don't ever see a local government being like, no, you can't do a major subdivision. I mean, it's the most basic thing that you approve, so why not just allow that by right?
Especially in a county environment. It would be very different in a, in a municipal environment, in a town or a city.
So, item three, yeah, that's pretty standard. I think that we've discussed that in past sections, number four even as well. All of these, all of these items, one through six particularly, tie very tightly to the land use plan. These, these items are noted in the land use plan, were very explicit in these particular policies, because there's some of the bigger shifts that happen, and so...
Oh, I found it. Okay. So, as we're talking about manufactured homes in subdivisions out of manufactured homes, instead of an RP district, the ordinance would create a new manufactured home district. So, mobile home parks would be allowed within this district, and major subdivisions of manufactured homes would have to be rezoned to this district before they were allowed.
And you can see all of the general use zoning districts listed, starting on page 56, which is section 4101. We talk about the RA, the RP, residential mixed, rural, commercial, and so forth. I feel like there's summary table, oh yeah, there's a summary table at the very start of Article Four, which is on page 55.
If I can put that up too, I'll go, I'll go for the number five and then put that up. So, another, this proposes a change in the residential mixed zoning district to represent a mix of housing types. Excuse me, that popped up before I was ready.
That's the graphic right there, Carrie.
Yeah, I'll bring it back up in a second. To encourage a mix of housing types within the target growth area, which is that area of the land use plan where our utilities are being serviced from. So, this is intended to, to allow a better mix of housing types, town, home, single family, some multifamily perhaps, where there's water and sewer. Eric, any better explanation?
Um, I don't know that these, do you guys, are y'all clear? I think, I think that you explained it fine. Everyone's shaking their heads.
Eric and Carrie, with the current zoning now, what happens if we adopt, when we adopt the newest UDO, would anything, would any of this retrofit, you know, go back and change zonings currently on property?
No.
Okay, so everything's staying the same at this point?
Yeah, everything, everything would stay the same. And it's, we have some older zoning districts on the books from years and years ago, and those are, those still are on the books. But anything that's zoned currently would stay as it's zoned.
Yeah, what, what you're, residential protected essentially becomes obsolete. No one's going to rezon to residential protected anymore. We're keeping it in the ordinance, because you've got a lot of property that's zoned out, that's fine. What residential protected does right now, you're going to find, a lot of subdivisions will do through, you know, just their own standards are going to apply. The one that's maybe the trickiest will probably be residential mixed. That's the trickiest one, because under your current UDO, it allows manufactured homes. Okay? So, what you're going to have is, in fact, we'll put it, and I'm going to actually put it on this copy I've got right here, I'm going to put an updated date right next to that, that'll reflect this date of the UDO adoption. So, what you're going to have is you've got residential mixed zone property that, when it's rezoned after the adoption of this UDO, you know, manufactured homes will not be allowed. So, you have to go to a manufactured home district, which is a new zoning district. So, it's very clear as what these things are doing. But the residential mixed is probably the trickiest of all of those.
And it actually, we're, the way this is, this is proposed is a lot more intuitive, residential mixed versus manufactured home district.
That was the intent of the residential mix, was to create a place for the, for manufactured homes to go.
Yeah.
So, let's just do that. And in fact, we're taking the residential mix, and if you remember in the land use plan, we really target that zoning for, for areas that have water and sewer, but aren't necessarily appropriate for commercial. So, there we drive the density average opportunity way up, still allow the clustering, but now you've got water and sewer, there's a lot of flexibility there. So, again, think target growth area, but not suitable for commercial, and that's where you get residential mixed. Townhomes, you could apartment buildings, small, large, and a mix thereof.
So, I have a follow-up to, I have a follow-up, if I can, to Phillips. So, back to number three, we talked about the residential protected, since it's going to be basically become obsolete, will the landowners have to rezon, or that'd be something that will be taken care of through your all's department, Carrie?
If I could answer you a bit more...
No, no, they won't have to be rezoning. He, he means that it'll be obsolete for new, new subdivisions. It'll still exist as it is.
Yeah, I mean obsolete as in no one's going to rezon to that, but we're leaving it in the ordinance, so we don't have to go through what you're suggesting.
Can you give an example of this residential mixed? What would, what would that sort of look like? I'm having a hard time visualizing this.
Do you remember the maps in the land use plan?
You're talking about the Bennett Farm map?
Yeah. The residential part of the Bennett Farm map and the residential on the opposite side of the road.
It's actually exhibit...
A mix of single...
Exhibit 17, we call it the west target growth area scenario of site plan.
You'd have some townhomes mixed with some...
Yeah, it was, it was this site plan.
Okay.
And these were just properties we picked that, that in the county, that were in the target... the target growth area. This one happened to have 116 acres. We were able to provide 20% open space. We got this particular design concept, our urban design team got to about five dwelling units per acre and still preserved 20% of the open space. I think if we go into the, if we go into the UDO here, I think you're allowed up to six dwelling units per acre.
Six is what the proposal is, yeah.
So in here, we had 297, single-family detached, 200 townhomes, and 94 cottage court designs. So, does that make sense? Like, so it's, it's meant to allow for a variety of housing types. So if you go to the use table underneath this zoning district, there's all types of townhomes, cottage courts, you know, fourplexes, et cetera.
Okay.
Now, the difference is that this is someone could come to you all and try to do an outright rezoning. This is not a conditional zone district or a scenario like a planned unit development. This would not, not be a site-specific requirement for you all. So they would come in for a general use rezoning. So this is when the development community has, really responds. Because we have a code, we're willing to go with the density average, we have development standards, but someone can come in here and just say, "Hey, I just want to rezone to this," and be like, "Provided the commissioners will give me water and sewer." Once that's a done deal, then they're off to the races. They won't come back to you all and just go through the technical...
So in that instance, if, if we rezone, say there's a developer...
Yep.
Bennett Farm, and you've got, there's a hundred and some acres. So if they, if they rezone to residential mixed, then that leaves them open to put whatever type of housing there the market will demand. And it could be some single-family homes, it could be some patio homes, it could be some apartment complexes.
That's right.
But I'm not hearing, so, but you said that manufactured housing can be part of this cluster? It is not part of it? Okay, that's, that's what's confusing me because I'm thinking, well, I, I get the mix of dwelling type mixed in with some commercial that might be, that might make sense, but I couldn't figure out, okay, so...
Manufactured homes are permitted in two ways in this ordinance. One is through the residential agriculture, minor subdivision only. Or through the manufactured home district.
Okay, so...
So you have to rezone, just like you have to do now. It's not any more burdensome.
I wasn't understanding that, okay. I do now.
It's just you're going to rezone to that district as opposed to the residential mixed.
And you just, you just helped with a big point for me. RA is still allowed to put a manufactured home as it is today, but not a major subdivision. Then that goes to a whole different category.
We, we literally did not change how you all handle manufactured housing at all. We just changed the semantics of it a little bit, if you will.
You recategorized it, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Made it much more explicit. So if you've got a zoning letter, it wouldn't say, "We're going to rezone this to, to a residential mixed," which could be a ton of things underneath your current ordinance.
Right, which is a little scary. Well, so...
It's unpredictable. And so one of the things here was to create predictability in the ordinance for everyone.
It sounds like to me that you put a name to it. We've never really had a name to manufactured housing other than to say where it can't be, right?
That's right.
So now you're, now you're putting a name to where, what it is and where it can be.
Major subdivision.
Yeah, for major subdivision.
Right, right.
It'll still be allowed in minor subdivisions without rezoning, but it's, it's, and it actually, it's, all of the, the way this is set up makes it really easy for a developer to follow the market. If there's a market for manufactured homes and they're located where there's water and sewer in that intensity and that, and everything, all else is, is in accord with the land use plan, then it's a, that's a really good alternative to stick-built home subdivisions where it's appropriate.
Yeah, and I wonder if that'll help out because manufactured housing has a, you know, does not have a great connotation. I wonder if putting it, putting it under this aegis would, really does help, help in that respect to manage it better so that the, so that the con, the perception is better, if that makes sense.
Give it some credibility.
Yeah, credibility. It, it needs a little credibility because it doesn't now.
Yeah.
And I have one more quick question in regards to that for, for both you guys. How does a on-frame modular fit into that category? It's, it's a modular, but it has the...
So the difference, a manufactured home is built in HUD standards.
Right.
Modular is just, you know, fabricated, but it's still built to the North Carolina Building Code.
But the on-frames look, most people couldn't tell the difference between an on-frame mod and a, and a double mod, other than the pitch of the roof. Now, off, now, off-frame, you definitely can't, you know...
Let me say it another way. Local zoning law, you can, the reason we can control manufactured housing like this is because it's built to the HUD standard. You, we can't control housing the way we're suggesting to, if it's, if it meets the North Carolina Building Code.
Correct.
So that's, yeah, so we can't separate the two.
So modular housing will be considered the same as stick-built, as far as allowed as a building type?
Yeah, the better way just to, to communicate that is to say, is it, does it meet North Carolina Building Code or does it meet HUD standard? That's, that's the real question. That's the only thing that manufactured home is defined as, is it's built to the HUD standard.
And my last question, in, in the example you're utilizing, the planned urban development, that doesn't necessarily fit under RM if you have any commercial inside of that. Is that correct?
Residential mixed, no. It doesn't allow for commercials, so you couldn't do an outright rezone, a general use rezoning.
So if someone wanted to do the example of the Bennett West with the townhomes, the patio homes...
Well, the Bennett East.
The Bennett East.
Bennett East has the commercial in it.
Okay, I'm with you. I'm with that, yeah.
Yeah, Bennett East has the, has the commercial.
So what would that fall under?
That would most likely be a planned unit development.
Okay, okay.
That would, that would be allowed under a planned unit development.
So you're going to come with, that's going to feel very much like a conditional use. In fact, I've got that in the UDO. You're going through the same process as you go through a conditional use district rezoning.
So that's not a zoning, that's a completely separate entity with the planned urban development?
Yeah, it's almost, it's like a floating district. It's like, it's a special district.
But it is a district. It is a zoning district. So it's not a, you know, it's, it's not a HUD over something else.
Yep.
It is rezoning to a HUD.
Yes.
And then the, the details of that HUD would depend on the site plan and the conditions that are submitted and approved.
Okay, so that's the big difference, where site plan approval...
Yeah, exactly. A HUD would require, having more detail upfront.
Yeah, it's, the process will feel just like conditional use, but Carrie's correct. It's not the same. It's, it's a, yeah. And, and the planned unit development is meant to capture everything, not just those areas with water, sewer, residential and commercial. You know, if you've got, somewhere out in the county has no water, no sewer, but you know what, I want to do some short-term lodging, Airbnb treehouses, and I want to do some yurts, and I want to have a little camping area with a little store, and a, like, that would be a planned unit development as well. There's no way we could capture that in the ordinance. The planned unit development is the method for that as well. So you could think of the most rural, interesting, mixed type of, of business concept, or you could think of a serious mixed-use water, sewer, commercial along your target growth area. Both of those things, you would see the planned unit development work for them.
Yeah, we, planners end up beating our heads against the wall a lot with things like treehouses. We, what do we call it?
Yeah, and I didn't, I'm not trying to go down that rabbit hole, but yeah.
No, but it's a good, it's a good example because it's, it's one of those things that has come up over time. You know, we have no idea what's coming next. I don't know what clever use of, of land might be a twinkle in somebody's eye, but it's, this allows us to, to really let people be creative, offer flexibility, but require enough detail so that we can, we know what to expect.
I'd love to see somebody do something with yurts myself.
Well, and, and expand later, clarify that. So you're saying if someone wanted to do a treehouse...
Mm-hmm, well...
Not a campground, I mean, I'm struggling with what to even call this.
I mean, call it a campground, you know? It's going to have a store, going to have a variety of types of uses, the lodging could be short-term, long-term, et cetera.
So that would fit under, a campground would fit under a planned urban development?
Not necessarily, not really. A campground is probably, is just allowed in the residential agricultural zoning district with standards.
Yep.
Like it is now. With, with standard, with a rural guest establishment.
Under there, yeah.
All those standards of paintball, airsoft. Those would still be as they are now under residential agricultural.
Yeah.
Planned unit development is for more, more complicated mixes of uses. It's more, it's, it's mixes of uses. Most of the things that we described are allowed under a single use, like a campground with a store. This is that chart of all of the zoning districts that Eric referred to earlier, just to, to give you in one, in one place what all the districts would be. So you see RP is still listed. As a, as a district, it just won't be, there'll be no reason to request it. Paul had recommended that, I just have to find it again, that I share a really cool graphic. Hope I still have it open. There it is. I think. All right, let's keep going while I look for it again. It's, I think it's just because my computer's very slow with the connection, the remote connection that I have. And then Article 5, this is the, the development standards I was talking about that are, it's not, they're not zoning standards, but they're development standards that apply to a use like a campground with a store in order to make sure that that use fits in with the, fits into the area.
And you're going to find your current UDO...
...impact on adjacent properties.
Page 152, if you're interested in having that.
Your current ordinance has these development standards. The difference here is the organization here is a little better. It's a little, it's just easier to see, read through and so forth, but, you know, parking, signage, landscape, and all the things that you all have now. The thing that's different is Division 7, and this is the design standards for commercial And, you know, the commissioners, this is one of the things that we're going to need the committee to kind of come back to us on. In the, in the land use master plan, we had suggested that you all adopt some very basic kind of standards for commercial buildings. We'll, we'll see whether or not collectively everyone agrees that should stay in there or not. But otherwise, pretty standard fare here. I don't know if, Carrie, if you all have looked through these standards and feel like something is significantly different than what you currently have, but...
This is, it's a big bite to chew. I've been directed by the Board of Commissioners to make sure that we don't have anything in there that's unusually limiting, that's, that's unreasonably limiting or unreasonably prohibitive. So that's something I was actually going to ask the advisory group to look through. But this group, Paul, do you, what do you think here, this group looked through those?
Oh, yeah. So, so for everybody's benefit here, if you look at the illustration on the lower left, that's what a development would look like if all the lots were one acre. And although it looks very pastoral and, you know, really neighbors far apart and everything, look at all the agricultural land that's lost to doing it that way as opposed to the drawing or sketch on the lower right. By clustering the homes in one section, look at the amount of agricultural land that's preserved.
If agricultural, it might be lakes and streams, it might be open space, it might be passive, you know, trails and, and areas to play in.
Carrie, can I ask you and Eric a question in regards to a rezoning with public water and sewer? If a request comes up, as you know, we have limited infrastructure currently in an area where future growth is potential, and it comes to the rezoning board to zone it, but we're not 100% sure if they're going to get the infrastructure approved and funded. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it would have to be conditioned upon the capacity, the availability of capacity. And most often, the, well, what will happen is a developer will come to us inquiring about the potential feasibility of capacity before they even go to a rezoning. So that, I'm in, I'm suggesting that the commissioners use the land use plan, excuse me, in this target growth area and, and all the policies in the land use plan to help prioritize their expenditure for water and sewer and capacity increases for water and sewer. But to your question, if somebody came in without knowing, it would be, a request would be just conditioned upon availability. So they wouldn't be able to actually subdivide it once it was, if it's zoned that way, they, they wouldn't get to the next step.
I have a question. Looking at the graphic that you have up here, Paul, I just made an interesting comment that sort of piqued the question in my mind. So the, what we're looking for where you've got more of the agricultural land that's available for, for either open space or agricultural use, is this going to change the marketability of the land itself? And for example, if you've got, say you've got an existing rural farm and you want to sell it for development, is that going to change how the market looks at this piece of property? For example, would a developer buy 100 acres or would they buy 40? Just because if they know they can, they, they're only going to need 40 and they're going to maximize their return on this land, are they going to buy that, just 40? Are they going to buy the 100? And, yeah, I'm, that, I'm just, is there any data out there?
Both scenarios, both scenarios on the bottom will still be allowed. The, the, a market can dictate that a developer create those one-acre lots in the lower left. Or there might be a better market for smaller lots and a mix of houses on the lower right. And it will be, it'll be entirely up to the developer about the cost of land versus the lot yield and cost of roads. Look at the number of roads he has to build on the 100-acre property to the left as to whether he needs 40 or 100. And of course, what's being sold. So acres might come on the market and a, and a developer will look at that size and go through those motions, which would be, which would be better, which would be better for the market, which would be better for, for developability. Maybe Philip can help here.
Well, that's, that's going to fall, you know, the location's going to be probably the thing that I see dictating that. I can see areas where the cluster is going to work, and I can see areas where the larger lot sizes, probably higher-end properties are going to be on the left there.
The thing that, the thing the clustering does in the lower right photo is present an option to the developer that he does not now have because the minimum lot size has got to be an acre.
And you're, you're not likely going to get septic lots on that lower right.
Right.
So that's also going to be, that's really going to dictate where, where that happens. Although, although it, you know, that scenario on the lower right could be appropriate anywhere if the wastewater and water could be handled with the... anywhere if the wastewater and water could be handled with a community well and, uh, maybe a package plant septic system. It gives alternatives, it gives options.
Well, and it occurs to me that, um, the, the picture on the right, um, it really does, um, promote a different sense of neighborhood that currently doesn't exist in the rural parts of our county. I mean, we really don't have, we have subdivisions, we don't have neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Right.
And putting, allowing a builder to put these houses closer together or these dwellings closer together, um, seems to me to, to really promote that sense of neighborhood.
This is where you can get your townhomes and things of that nature from.
Well, also, we've heard a number of cases too where we've had farmers that said, you're taking away our livelihood and our, and the look of the county, and that bottom right gives that same option. I think that's what Paul was trying to refer to, that it gives the farmers still a major option in the county too, which we don't wanna lose.
Yeah, they get scared with the subdivisions and they keep hearing that a lot.
That farmer could keep farming or could lease, lease that farmland out where it could be an agri-hud that farms and, when you live there.
Well, I'm thinking about, is, was it the Sheltons, um, that they all showed up and the, they, they were really afraid that, um, cause their family had been on these two farms and they weren't selling, but the guy beside them was.
Yeah.
And they were really afraid what that subdivision was gonna do their farm.
And what I've seen, it really hadn't affected the neighboring farms, other than the look and the, you know, I mean, track, you know, but it hadn't affected.
But maybe this would be more appealing if we can say to the farmers too, that, that come in and, and express real concerns, well, you know.
Something for you.
Yeah, this is what it may look like instead of, you got a bunch of sprawling houses.
We'll, we'll have to be, we'll have to be more sure than that before the rezoning though, because you, you don't wanna promise, you could say may look like, but I wouldn't wanna be misleading.
But if there's a plan in place, I mean, the-
This is true. This is absolutely, you're absolutely true. You're absolutely right. And bring it in as a, as a plan unit development or any kind of site plan. Uh, yeah, you're right. And I can, the planner can recommend, um, different districts based on what might be appropriate for a farming community versus a, um, a community where, where there's already a lot of major subdivisions or something just outside a municipality or whatever that location is. But, yeah, you're, you're right, Julie. You, you would be able to potentially say this is what it could look like.
I just know when I, when I hear people that are really concerned about what's gonna happen to, to their way of life, um, I hear that loud and clear. And the more tools we have to allay their fears or answer their questions, um, I think, I think we're better off. And it, I think it also gives us a different, a different way of looking at things as well. Um, I think that gives us, as a, as a entity or as a body, um, a new, a, a new way of offering, you know, some options for everybody, really.
It's options and variety that can respond to market demand and demographic demand. I mean, those, the, um, the housing availability for younger people that we want in this county, for instance, could be, could be made more possible. The, um, yeah, it just, it just allows people to stay in place for a long time and allows us to give people what they need and what, or what they prefer.
Well, there's, there's hope for my retirement dream of opening a tree-top cocktail lounge with rope ladders.
There you go.
No liability there.
No liability, mm-hmm.
That's pretty fun.
So I'll go through a little bit more of the organization here of the overall UDO. We, we've made it through Article 5, which is the development standards. Article 6 is supplemental regulations. This is, say someone could do something by right in a particular, in a RA zoning district, for example, there might be some other regulations, like, for example, kennels. If you wanna do a kennel, you can do a kennel by right under this scenario, but you might have to make sure X, Y, and Z, or, you know, um, every, and then there's other uses in there, like adult uses, you know, things like that from a legal standpoint that we have to address as well. Division 3 UCs, high-impact uses, this is all from your current ordinance, essentially. Um, but if you go to Division 2 there, um, you know, agritourism activities, animal facilities, animal hospitals, I'm just skipping through a couple of these, bed and breakfasts, breweries, wineries, campgrounds, cemeteries, uh, racetracks, um, firing ranges, uh, landfills, manufactured home parks actually have some specific standards here, museums, paintball facility, poultry, breeding facilities, you know, so there's 80 or so of those.
It's quite a few. It would be not, it actually wouldn't be bad to, to whittle some down if, if there are standards that are just being repeated, that they're, they're the same as standards for all uses.
And they're, they're not meant to be burdensome by any means. If you take the brewery, winery, which is very popular, there's, you know, it only applies to certain districts, they must meet principal setbacks, there's a minimum acreage there, it can't be located in a major subdivision, and the winery building is allowed as a principal structure. Like, they're not meant to be some burdensome level of criteria, but very basic. Uh, but like Carrie said, we could come in and trim some of these up, and it's been some of the comments from, from others that we look to do that, so that's a possibility. Much easier to take stuff away than add stuff.
I was surprised to read in the, on page 2, await in a high-impact, uh, intent, under Division 3, that although traffic has a, uh, as a factor or part of the criteria for high-impact, loss of home value is not. And there are some of these things on this list that if they were located within a reasonable distance of a house or a development or anything, it's, it's logical to conclude that they would definitely have a, a effect on the property value.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, and, and like, if you read Section A there, or Item A, the intent, um, mitigate the impact of uses, objectionable levels of noise, odor, vibrations, fume, light, smoke, traffic or other impacts, it's, I think you're correct. All that sums up to a loss of property value for everyone around them, so.
So we may wanna change that.
We could add that to it, but, yeah, so this deals with airstrips, concrete suppliers, chemical manufacturing, I'll just read through a couple of them, sawmills, scrap metal, uh, incinerators, chipmills, airport shooting ranges, asphalt plants, motorsport, like rag, racetracks and drag strips, explosive manufacturing, storage, wholesale. Most of these items you're gonna find are gonna go in your industrial zones and areas which most likely have very good transportation-related access. Um, and now you're in a rural county, I mean, there's homes that, that connect to all types of things, so.
Sure.
You know, the, the one thing about the land use plan and the UDO, it doesn't stop you from having to make tough decisions sometimes. And, uh, I wish we could, if we could figure out that formula, how to get everybody out of having to make tough decisions, we'd, we'd be on to something, but, uh, we do the best we can, so.
Eric and Carrie, can I just bring up two things that I think, Carrie, you know, I've called about this a million times, um, and, and probably the previous planner as well. Um, one of the biggest issues that I have out in, in the county is when it comes to easements and private roads and the 10-acre rule that we've, we've discussed and, and linked. And I, and it seems that there's, it's not super duper clear in some cases, um, and I didn't know if that was addressed at all in the UDO, if that had been looked at, or some of these old farms and old family farms that have been divided and things get a little confusing.
So, we've spent some time talking about the, um, the subdivision ordinance is where this would be addressed. Let me see if I can bring it up on the screen. And, um, we, we talked about, Philip, like, the idea of a, access to numbers of lots and roads versus easements, that sort of thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this where we're, we're talking about that? Yeah, okay. So we think we, we think we, um, working together with the advisory group, we think we have a good compromise.
So, Table 3401, um, dash 1.
Here we go.
It's a decent place to start.
What page is that on there?
36. Now, when you start talking about 10-acre plus lots, we all know, we cannot regulate those. So, as a realtor, you have to say buyer beware. Anytime you see 10.01 acres, that means that you can go and subdivide that and there's no local government control that can control it. So it's a buyer beware type of situation. That being said, Carrie, I'll let you take over in, in terms of addressing.
This makes it clearer, Philip, that, um, an exempt subdivision is also exempt from the requirements of, um, that sometimes planners have imposed. It's exempt, it's exempt. You can't require roads. You can't, um, guarantee access even. When you go to build a lot, if there's no place to, um, I don't mean, uh, yeah, if there's no place to access your lot, you're just, that's Eric's talking about, buyer beware.
But you do see here, we are requiring all easements, private and public rights away are recorded by plat. I don't know that that's how your current ordinance works. I'm trying to go back to some of the discussions, Carrie, but.
I, I, from, from previous experience, if, if it didn't meet the county ordinance, it couldn't be platted. It could be surveyed and it could be your fourth page of your deed, but it, it wasn't what I would consider what we call plat. You're not gonna have a plat book and page number.
The 10-acre lot, you mean?
Yeah, and, and, you know.
But the easement needs to be platted. If there's an access easement to it, that would need to be platted.
What does, what does the word platted mean? I mean-
Mapped and recorded with the registered deeds.
So does that mean a plat book and page number, or does that mean?
Correct, but just the easement. If, if it's a 10-acre lot and it requires an access easement, you won't have to record the 10 acres, but you have to record the easement accessing it.
Gotcha.
And that's, that's to protect all property owners from one another, Philip, and to, to, I mean, I think, it seems like you-
But I guess in theory, if there's, if there's not an access easement, you can still subdivide the 10 acres.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, well, I mean, I just ran into this personally where, you know, I have a, a page four of a deed, but I couldn't actually record it as a plat book and then have a page number.
It, it was, it was a property described by deed, like a 10-acre property?
Mm-hmm. And surveying.
And it wasn't, it, it wasn't platted because we can't by law require it to be platted?
I was told it didn't meet the county ordinance, so the, the planner at the time could not sign the plat.
Was it greater than 10 acres?
Mm-hmm.
They should've signed it exempt, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha.
Should've been signed as an exempt plat, not, not seeing it, Philip, or understanding, you know, more of it. Was the issue about access?
Word is now.
It was, it was a, a limited road frontage, 150-acre farm, and everybody's having 10-acre lots off of it, but it was very limited road frontage, and there's not a private road, but everybody does have a deed to access. In some places, it's shared.
Sure. Very typical in, in North, in North Carolina, North Carolina.
One of the other things, talking about access, that, um, this changes is to actually allow up to two lots to be accessed by an, uh, what used to be called an exclusive access easement. So that's gonna help, Philip, the, um, the, the one-time subdivider who wants to create three lots. You can access both of the back lots by one easement under this ordinance.
Coming back to your scenario-
Without, just a driveway.
There, there's no reason why you can't take that surveyed plat and have it signed exempt, have it signed exempt and recorded with the register of deeds.
Yeah.
If you're not just having a public opinion, even though it's a page four of a deed.
Yeah.
Philip, was it me or anyone in my, during my tenure?
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay.
No, definitely not.
I just wanted to be sure, so you-
No, it's private, private.
So, um-
But on the subject of roads, private roads, we changed some definitions. We actually spent probably at least two, if not three hours, maybe during two meetings, talking about that exact situation. Um, because on the advisory committee is developers, surveyors, and everyone, everyone is struggling with this issue in the county, so I think that we have resolved it.
You know, we might, um, go ahead and add a row for exempt plat since we've got prelim- you know, plat required. You think that would help, Philip?
Oh, abso, I mean, yeah, I mean, it would, it would just clarify, and that way, hopefully you go nowhere for a very long time. Um, that way, if somebody coming in behind has a different thought process, at least it's in the UDO.
And then these other, oops, the preliminary plat, um, columns are just, are not checked.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna add a note here.
What do you, do you think, Eric, does that make sense to it?
Well, it adds clarity, and so clarity's good.
Yeah. And I, it meets the example, we'll describe it better than that, but, and the, an exempt plat will be defined elsewhere in this ordinance, so we can be real brief here. We can refer back to Section such and such. I still think that we should, um, record access easements. Philip, what's your feeling?
Well, I mean, I agree. I mean, it, it, it helps to settle a lot of unknowns.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the more everything, like, even an exempt subdivision is still a subdivision, it's just exempt from your local subdivision standards, but it still needs to be recorded at the register of deeds and preferably with a plat for a licensed surveyor. I mean, it has, it has to be, you know, so.
Excuse me, I said that wrong. Yeah, exempt subdivision.
And it's much easier to reference on a deed if you have a plat book and page, so it's easier to locate moving forward.
Yeah. I'm trying to think, the roads, cause you asked a, a good question about the roads, it's one we spend a lot of time on, it's, it's almost, it's memo-worthy, you know? Um, that particular issue. And I'm trying to go to that spot here. I don't know if you can help me remember where we did, cause we, we created a new county road.
Where we defined different types of roads.
We have a county road, we have a private road, and we got a DOT standard road. There's a county road that's, that's built to DOT specifications, but could be private, or is that the one that could be, um, that meets DOT specifications?
I'm just wanting to bring this away so I can look at it more carefully.
So, I know it's in definitions, I know I added it there, but I'm trying to find in the zoning ordinance where this goes. This is, this is some more, I think, good stuff for the county long ra, long-term.
Mm-hmm. I thought it was close to the, you really required the rights of my notification.
Fifty-three oh three, would that be it, one twenty-four? Road standards?
Let me see here.
Yeah, it looks like this.
Yeah, site design?
I think it's one twenty-four, and it's, uh.
Page one twenty-four he's talking about.
Yeah, fifty-three oh three, it's. Yeah, it's under division three of Article Five, so that's where we get fifty-three, right? So.
Okay.
Whenever you see the number, the first number is the article, the second is the division, and so forth.
So, um.
So.
Let's reference, can we cross-reference this section? Because we just got through talking about how we wanted this to be easy to use.
Yeah, I'm going to make another note to reference, um, section fifty-three in that table.
Yeah. And then we don't have to repeat it.
All right, we're getting some work done tonight. It's good.
Yeah, and then we go on to talk about, um, a driveway with an exclusive use for that many lots. Or it is, that's right, it's three lots. So, we're being really forgiving. Okay?
And when y'all make it to definitions, I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, when y'all, when, when the time is appropriate and we move to definitions, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, you should see this underneath the, the term road, and then you should see road county, road NC DOT, and so forth, and we can, um, help, help remind, that was fifty-three oh three. Okay, I've got that noted in, um, in section thirty-four, where we talk about major, minor subdivisions, et cetera. So, there, there's the conversation.
Yeah, that's where, that's where it is.
Going back to fifty-three oh three, this is.
Is it one, can you see this navigation pane that I'm playing with? It's kind of small.
Yeah.
Over here, but, um, this is a, a real benefit to the way that Eric has organized this, because you can scroll through here, and, um, it, it's organized intuitively. There's the zoning subdivision ordinance, and, um, when he's talking about section fifty-three, for instance, the development standards start down here in, um, development standards in division three, infrastructure, which includes roads.
Am I missing where it says what is actually defined as, uh, the standards for a private road? I mean, I did see thirty-foot width.
Um, it, it's under B there, the designation, fifty-three oh three B. Well, that's the designation. Road standards.
Subsection D, that's where you're looking for, yeah. I have to scroll down a little bit.
But it's talking about five lots, um.
It's what we're calling a county road.
Okay, just the engineering.
County standards. It's basically, uh, NC DOT with no paving. And what we're calling a private road right now, Philip, for three, three lots, we're allowing up to three lots to have just an easement with no specific road standards. So, what we, what we use for private road right now, you, you've got three lots and you have to put in a roadway. So, we've created this nomenclature for county road standards, which is, which is, um, basically private roads.
Or you could call it a drive, you know, it's essentially a drive.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're allowing up to three, for three homes to be on a, on a road that has no, that could possibly not be a road.
Right now, we allow two.
Okay, so we're opening it up to three.
But does that, does that include, um, any engineering or turnarounds, or T-turnarounds, or cul-de-sacs, or ditches? Is it, have any requirements?
It does not, just like two lots does not now.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the better way to think of it is a driveway.
But, excuse me, thirty-foot, um, right-of-way.
Big driveway.
That's just a right-of-way, the driveway doesn't have to be, that entirety doesn't have to be paved.
We're requiring a right-of-way that's thirty feet, but you can build it to whatever standard you like.
This, this is something that, um, the citizens of the county really need, as expressed by, um, inquiries that we get daily, is that, that third lot and the requirement to do a private road, to pay, to do any kind of paving, has, um, really created a lot of hardship where it didn't need to. You know, turning people away for, for that three. It's, it's, it's not difficult to turn someone away when it's, um, more than three lots. Then we really start to need a road.
A scenario like this can help with some of the ten acre lot issues you all have right now, because people don't want to pay for the engineering, the road, those types of items, so they'll go to a ten acre lot just to bypass all that, and you actually create a worse situation.
That's true.
So, um, that's, that's some of the unintended consequences of having such a high standard, is you actually create more problems, right? So, I think, I think the advisory group found a nice balance for this community and where you all are at with this point.
Yeah, we have a lot of large, deep parcels with limited frontage, and that's one of the issues we're running into.
Yeah.
Who do you guys want to go next? We've, we've gotten through the, the list of, um, the memorandum.
I think things that are on our list are, we want to meet again with the advisory group to discuss some things that we discussed with commissioners about the land use plan. I think we could potentially whittle down, and Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is something that in your camp, that you're looking at the development standards and seeing if we can't reduce and get, just straight remove some of the supplemental uses.
Yes.
That's another item. The plan unit development is pretty bare bones right now. It, it could function as it is in here, and I, I'm not so sure that the way we have written isn't sufficient, but it's basically, runs like a conditional use plan, conditional use district, where some, people are gonna provide a, a site-specific master plan to you all. The uses are pretty much wide open. They can present anything and try to make the case for it. So, it's ultimate flexibility, and, you know, you, when I was a, a county planner, we, we used to run a lot of things through planned unit developments, and we required twenty, twenty-five percent open space. Other than that, would let, would let you present anything you wanted to. So, you know, you could have a minimum amount of open space kind of threshold, um, naturally, that, that usually is gonna come as part of the planned unit development, but.
One quick question on that, which I'll, one of the reasons we like the site plan is if there's any watershed or flood plain area, of course, that's what they're gonna want to utilize is the twenty-five percent.
Sure.
I mean, it makes sense for any developer to use that as their, their buffer. So, we don't have that requirement now, right? We don't have the certain level has to be open. It's just conditioned based on site plan. Is that correct?
We, we do, you mean the, the open space?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Yeah, let's go there real quick. It's gonna be in, so Article Four, again, is zoning districts. Unless I've got.
All right.
Division three is a special district, so, sorry, so forty-three, so Article Four, Division Three, planning and development. And you can see the purpose here. Plan, you, planned development district is established to encourage the master planning of large-scale, multiple, or mixed-use development patterns. Applicants who propose, um, planning developments have more flexibility and creativity in design than is possible in a conventional and zoning. It encourages open spaces, high standards in design, efficient development, efficient land use, coordinated mix of a variety of land uses. It encourages the development of large contiguous parcels of property, promotes clustering of structures in order to preserve unique natural features such as woodlands, wetlands, natural drainage systems, and areas, so.
As of right now, we aren't requiring open space percentages. We're just allowing people to develop better around environmentally protected areas.
Yeah, so at the bottom of page one twenty, you see I there. Open space for passive or active recreation is encouraged.
Yeah.
So, this is just like a conditional use, that you're into a negotiation type of scenario, which you all and the applicant both would need to agree, you know? So, this is pretty, I would, for lack of a better term, light in terms of, of requirements. This is providing a lot of flexibility to the applicant. I think the next step here would just turn that, that encourage, like, to say, all right, in order for this type of flexibility, we're gonna want to see at least, you know, twenty percent or twenty-five percent open space and like that, but I'm not sure, um, I think there's a reason why it's like this.
Does it, does this section, does this section take into consideration the provisions of the Planned Unit Development Act and the general statutes?
Are you talking about the condominium?
Well, the, the condominium act is separate. The, the first one was the Unit Ownership Act. That was, that was superseded by the condominium act, which was superseded by the Planned Unit Development Act.
Planned Unit Development Act. Yeah, this is, was, I don't think there were any changes to that in one sixty-D, were there, Paul?
I don't know if they incorporated any of that into one sixty-D. I would think that they would so that there wouldn't be a conflict of laws.
Exactly. Well, I'll look and see. I'll be able to answer your question.
All right, I can research that. That's not, that's not hard for me.
Okay, look, go for it. Go get it. That's awesome.
Eric, I mean, I, I think this is, this is great, the, the plant urban development. I don't think the county's ever seen one of these in the county. I'm pretty certain.
So, it's not urban, it's unit.
I mean, I meant to say unit. I guess my question is, is, but this is still like a special use, so I mean, site plans, I guess that's just built in, that a site plan has to be, um, does it make it difficult for a planning board if there's no, there's no guideline? I mean, there's the guidelines with the promotes, enhances, and things of that nature, but does it make it a little more difficult with the planning board approving or disapproving, or have you, have you seen that, if it's real lax like this?
Well, it. No, I wouldn't consider this lax in that regard. Like, you're gonna have to submit a site plan, and one thing we could do to make it a little more clear in here is, you know, in the past, I've always required a, a guiding document. It's gonna say, all right, here's what my density average is gonna be, this is how many units I'm gonna have, like, it really spells out exactly what they're gonna do. And then there's a site plan that matches that document. That is what this board would recommend, you know, to the commissioners. The commissioners would adopt that, and then staff would go in and use that as their guidelines, you know? So, usually.
I'm just, yeah, it's a really good idea to have a, um, that, uh, we can call it a, a guiding document, we can call it a, um, site details that might talk about the types of roads and what they're gonna look like, landscaping, and what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, I can pull, I can pull some.
So, the whole thing becomes a reg, regulating, the, 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 the regulating plan that's being, um, proposed to you is what ends up being developed. And with you, as far as you making a decision about whether it's appropriate or not, you're looking at, um, the, let me, I'm thinking, the intensity and size of it in relation to where it's located, the, um, the, uh, amount or intensity of, of commercial that's being proposed, and whether that's appropriate where it's gonna be located, whether the traffic impacts are gonna be mitigated. It's a lot more based on how the thing fits and performs to where it's being suggested.
Yeah, and the context is, is gonna be huge.
Really important.
But I, I don't think you all will, I think you'll have a lot of fun with this, actually. It's, this is where your most creative development is gonna come, your most creative developers most likely will come through this process. With the onset of sewer infrastructure, there's gonna be tremendous amount of opportunity. And I think I've said it to this board before, like, you're gonna have three, four, five major developments, I think, in the next five to eight years that will set the tone for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. And frankly, they could take ten years to build out once they actually start. We're talking about that type of scale, so.
I think that we can add some, um, guidelines for decision in here to be helpful. I can help you with that, Eric, just some, um, criteria for approval.
Yeah, I think that we should do that, and basically, things for the, the planning board commissioners to consider. And then, secondly, I think we list out the criteria in which, what the applicant has to put into their document, you know? We need a, a statement regarding open space, a statement regarding buffers, a statement regarding environmental, a statement regarding density, dwelling units, square footages, that, that type of thing. So, it's really clear, and that augments the site plan nicely, and it protects the planning department as well as they move this thing into, into the development phase. So, yeah, I think, I think those are good changes that are more kind of administrative, but.
That'd also save a lot of questions that come up in the technical review committee. If that information was supplied upfront. How many times in the, Carrie, in the technical review committee meetings did these questions come up? It's often.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so I, um, yeah, I can pull that down, yeah. Usually, it's a four or five-page document, should be really clean, bold headings, bullet points, maybe a three-to-five sentence paragraph, really nice summary of, of what the development's proposing.
I'm all for that.
That and a really good-looking site plan, and we'll talk to the races.
So, the, um, so we've got that outline. Is there any consensus about, how do you guys feel about it just being, um, location specific versus asking for open space, or, um?
I, I think in view of the fact that topography is a controlling factor, it should be, um.
Based on?
The first thing you said, I'm, I'm tongue-tied here.
Well, did, did we actually establish any requirements, or we're just saying that they submit these things to the, to the planning board and, and review? And I guess we'll take the content, the context of location, right? But I mean, this is more of a.
Yeah.
They're providing us additional information to make a decision, but it's not like the work, the twenty-five percent, let's just say, open space is not a requirement, it's just.
Not as we've written it in the UDO.
That's just they submit it to these, yeah.
I was just saying that's very common in other ordinances for planned unit developments. This is meant to be a trade. It's like, we'll give you ultimate flexibility, but we want to protect some open space. The idea being is we continue to grow as a community, we've got to have, you know. The idea being, as we continue to grow as a community, we've got to have, you know, preserve certain areas, which.
What I was trying to say is, that might have to be site-specific.
Yeah.
Because of the topography, maybe it's not possible to leave too much open space.
Yeah, and I think that's fine.
Or it may be open space, but unusable.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I think it's whatever you all want. I think you're still gonna get quality development with a good planning staff guiding before they ever get here. You've got a good land use plan that kind of points people in a direction, that's not too pushy, you know? So, again, there's still gonna be hard decisions have to be made.
We will, we'll do, we'll have some criteria for you guys to, some criteria for approval. And we also should describe the kind of conditions. And everything that, all of this criteria, conditions, or anything else is basically geared toward making sure that the land use plan is followed.
Mm-hmm.
So, we can, we can do that. I think I've got some examples too, Eric, of kind of criteria.
Okay. So, I'm gonna add a note here, we're gonna add, basically, report information that would come from the applicant and criteria, obviously, for consideration, for you ought to consider, traffic impacts, surrounding uses, context, environmental, and so forth. So, I'll make that note under section forty-three oh-three. Okay? So, I've got that one cross-reference change for roads, I've got this item here.
Standing.
Is it time? Can we?
Definitions?
Yeah.
I'm there.
Okay.
I'm in definitions right now. Where do you wanna go?
What page do you wanna do?
I am on page two-hundred-and-eleven right now, and it will reference back to page one-fifty-seven.
Okay.
Get ready for the can of worms to be opened.
What's the, what section, are we in the definition section, is that what you're saying?
Yes, in the definition sections.
Oh.
Thank you. Under page, under two-eleven, adult uses number two, adult cabaret, an establishment which features exotic dancers, strippers, male or male impersonators, or similar entertainers, and from which minors should be excluded for any reasons. I have a problem with including male or female impersonators, the, many of those are not sexual in nature, and therefore should not be, under the, under page one-fifty-seven, there's a whole, there's a whole list of conditions. I have no problem with the conditions, it's just that one thing there that you're saying that male or female impersonators are coming with a connotation that's just not right.
So, it's essentially drag, I suppose?
Yep, yep.
So, Carrie, you jump in here, but I don't write this, I just plug and play this from state requirements and other things, like, this is more set language to deal with these particular uses.
Well, and, and too.
So, I would be more happy to leave all of it, if it was up to me.
No, and I think, I think.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate to, to list these things out. I just don't think that has a place here, because, because of the nature of that entertainment, it's, it doesn't necessarily, there, there's, it does, the entertainment is not necessarily something that somebody under, or over twenty, it needs to be exclusive to somebody over twenty-one. And I'm, I'm thinking of, we actually do a fundraiser with an Elvis impersonator, it's the same thing, it's the exact same thing. So, I really, I feel like this language, that small piece of language is a bit discriminatory.
Okay, so you're just talking about the male or female impersonators.
Exactly, that's the only part of that, that I think, yep. Just because it's.
I mean, we could go anywhere from where we were to adding, you know, messing with adding and subtracting uses, to just defining it as an establishment which features entertainments from which minors are excluded by reason of age.
I think that's, I think that's a fine definition, instead of going into, into minute detail.
I didn't catch exactly what you said, but I think the key to this whole phrase, it's "and," from which minors are excluded by reason of age, that's the key here. So, if it's an Elvis impersonator, you wouldn't be excluded because of age.
Well, even a drag, I mean.
Do you wanna, is this?
Again, if you're not excluded by age, it doesn't apply.
Right. Okay.
I'm not an attorney, though.
I knew y'all would giggle, but, see, I'm trying to be professional.
I would never call.
Yeah, well, of course, leave it to me to catch that, but I was just, yeah, I was just perusing through the definitions, going, wait a minute.
So, that minors are excluded by reason of age, based on what the law, the current law of the state?
That's, that's what I gather, from how this is put together. I mean, that, yeah, this is attorney language, you can find it real quick.
I think the qualifying descriptive word here is "adult." The context in which "adult" is used.
Yeah.
Means of a highly suggestive, in a sexual way, nature.
Yeah.
And we do wanna limit, you know, we do wanna manage the dwellings, or the places where that, that is, but that just kind of stuck out with me, it's kind of not fair.
So, I put something up on the screen, Eric, that just takes out all the examples.
Yeah, just take out all the examples.
Yeah, I, I'll go with whatever y'all wanna go with, I, this is.
Eric, is this language out of a general statute by any chance?
I don't think it's in a general statute, but I'm pretty sure.
My way, my way getting around these things, like I did with the handicap parking section, just say that it has to comply with section such-and-such of the North Carolina General Statutes, and you don't have to say another damn word.
Yeah.
That's a.
It's the per state part, that's what I was suggesting, yeah, just.
I'm sure there's laws about this kind of stuff. You want me to look them up?
If you wanna delve into it, feel free. I just know every community we work in, we have to deal with adult uses, because they have, you can't just ignore it.
Oh, no, I'm not saying ignore it, I just, it's that, I don't want to be discriminatory.
No, no, I get it.
It's my only issue.
We can look at it more, I mean, the reason to, to include examples at all is to help people understand the intent of that language, of what an adult cabaret is.
But I do like to refer back to the, to the general statute, too, because, I mean, that really does, that will explain it.
Yeah, I'm just not sure we're gonna find it.
Oh, don't be surprised. There's a lot of statutes.
Alright, so I put, I just, I put a question mark in there.
I'm willing to bet, Eric, it's regulated by statute.
But there.
But I'll look it up.
But surely, it's, it's, the definition is a little, is a little more granular than this.
Could be.
And I would, I would have no problem with a more granular definition, but, but when I read it, it was like, okay, any, anybody that dresses up like a man or woman.
No, I'll, see, the way the thing would read, if, say there was a statute, it would say, all adult bookstores, adult cabarets, adult drive-in theaters, massage parlors, mini pictures, picture theaters, shall comply with North Carolina General Statute, the provisions of North Carolina General Statute, blah, 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 and that's the end of it.
That's the easy way out, too.
So, the whole thing, yeah.
Like, in the case of the handicap parking, North Carolina General Statute for handicap parking is very explicit, a lot more detailed than was put in this UDO. So, it's wise to just incorporate it by reference, and put, put the burden on the person that has to comply with the statute.
That's another thing that, another comment by the Board of Commissioners, is for us to comb the entire ordinance, to make sure that there aren't more opportunities to reference statutes. And redo some of the language.
Statutes, yeah. Instead of, instead of explaining it here, just do exactly what you're saying, go back, and this, not just to this one, but go back to others, are there other places in this where we can just reference the, the statute?
Oh, there probably are.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long, you know, and I just wanna make sure, because of ease of use, we wanna make sure that things that are really commonly, people need to know commonly, like, the definition of subdivision, I think it's good to repeat, and not make people have to go to the statute to figure it out.
Yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, but I think one of the commissioners have been suggesting that we just say general statutes, because the statutes and the, those change as well, I mean, if this ordinance is gonna go on for a long time.
Yeah, that's true.
As opposed to even the specific statute, but.
Well.
That's right, we all, we all just have to change one-sixty-A to D.
Anyone that has to comply with a general statute's also subject to any session law passed that affects that statute. And usually, if you're getting to that point where you're gonna have to investigate a North Carolina General Statute, a lawyer's involved, and the first thing he's gonna have his paralegal do is look up any session law to make sure that what's written down in the general statutes is still good law, that it hasn't changed.
Yeah.
Well, one-sixty-D, section nine-oh-two, adult businesses, lays it all out.
Well, there we go. All we have to do is reference that section.
I'm hooked with that.
You know.
Does it reference another statute in there, by any chance? One-sixty-D?
It's in one-sixty-D?
Yeah, one-sixty-D, nine-oh-two. But it talks about how you can regulate adult businesses. Such local regulations may include, but are not limited to. See, it provides people with the opportunity. This is the enabling legislation for you, so restrictions on location, such as specific zoning areas, minimum separation from sensitive land uses, regulations on operation, hours of operation, other things that I don't even wanna read.
No peep, no peep shows next to schools.
You know, so, local governments may enter into cooperative agreements regarding coordinated regulation of such businesses. So, again, it's more like the enabling legislation to, to deal with it, but it's not necessarily, like, these are the things that you, these businesses have to do, it's up to you all locally to do them, so.
I'll research the industry standard classification code, to see about examples in there, too.
And can you cross-reference that, or find some, some references to, not cabaret show, but it's a cabaret show, that, that there's no, there's no nudity, there's no sexual activity, things like that, because to me, that's a very different thing. I mean, that is clearly adult category to my mind, but, you know, just a, a show with either female or male impersonators.
Would you have to get a zoning change? I mean, would you have to do anything with zoning if your church was, I mean, not necessarily a church, but if your local civic group was gonna do one of those shows, would it, would it really relate to anything zoning-wise? Like, I guess.
Not if it's not an adult, not if it's not, as long as it's not defined as that particular use, so.
You mean, like a whole, whole, a variety show?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, 'cause I mean, I.
No, I don't think it, that's expression of art.
And that's what you're, and that's essentially what you're talking about.
Yeah, I just, but when I read this, I read that as the definition, and, and that was like, oh, wow. I mean, not that that would, I don't know how many times that would happen in Rockingham County, but, you know.
But, Green, it didn't, it didn't, it's not worded well, it was not worded well. It was, that came, that, I'm sure that text came from an older paradigm of what cabaret is. An outdated paradigm.
Yes, it's a paradigm.
Paradigms, almost.
So, it does reference another general statute, fourteen-dash-two-oh-two-point-ten, fourteen-dash-two-oh-two-point-ten. For the purposes of this section, sexually-oriented business means any business or enterprise that has one of its principal business purposes, or a significant portion of its business, an emphasis on matter, conducting, depicting, describing, or related to anatomical areas in sexual activity specified in general statute fourteen-dash-two-oh-two. So, there you get to your definition question of what is a sexually-oriented business.
Fourteen's the criminal law statute.
Man, I'm done. How are you?
Well, and actually, the enforcement of exclusion by reason of age is a police statute, I mean, that becomes, that's how it would be enforced.
Yeah, and, you know, we run, we would run up against the same thing with a gambling facility, I mean, what, I don't, I don't know the statutes on that, I mean, we clearly have had issues here, but to me, like, a bingo, a church-run bingo enterprise, a for-profit, or a for-profit bingo enterprise.
If it's a cash prize, you gotta have a permit for it.
Yeah, it's very different than fishing.
States against gambling unless they're the purveyor of it.
It's about skill versus chance, game of skill versus game of chance. So, but I like, I like that, and sort of deferring to where that regulation belongs, which is in the statute that defines sexually-oriented business, is not in a zoning regulation. So, it's in agreement with you, Julie, that.
Thank you. And I'm not facetious, just for the heck of it.
No, I like it. Is there anything else that jumped out at people?
Yeah, it says here at the very end, local governments may adopt detailed definitions of these and similar businesses in order to precisely define the scope of any government local regulation.
Yeah.
Alright.
I think I broke.
Well, I haven't read that in quite a few years, it's good.
Is there, I was, Carrie and Eric.
Sharpen up my skills.
I was talking with Tim earlier about the possibility of putting this document on something like OneDrive, so that as people make comments to it in the comment boxes, that everyone can see what the comments are. And that would keep us kind of up to date on the evolution of the document, instead of having to go back and keep printing all these drafts off. Do you have any, do you have any thoughts on that?
Can we do that without any kind of, what am I, what am I thinking? Any risk to the integrity of the original document?
So, the, the problem is, is the way we, I'm using Word, and using the searching, and using that component of it, that's why, like, putting it onto a drive, where we can go in there and tweak things, and it's kind of real-time updates, makes it just super difficult.
Okay.
And I thought early on about that, how to employ some new technology to, like, make this smoother, but I can't figure that component of it out.
Yeah, not, and that, not if you wanna keep the document in Word, because Google Drive doesn't protect Word.
It's that search feature that makes, it's the key, which is the number-one item in that, in the memo that I wrote, of like, alright, here's this navigation, and how it's easiest to use it, and that's what I don't wanna give up.
Well, then, well, my recommendation is, at this point, is we've talked about the major changes that Eric has suggested in his memorandum. Carrie, I, I think what we ought to do now is have the members take their copy, and, and probably have a better idea now on how to start going through the table of contents and what to look for, and if you see something that you think is gonna be a snag, or you don't understand, go to the review section in Word, and where it says "new comment," just put your cursor next to the section that you wanna put the comment in, and hit "new comment," and you'll be able to type it in.
So, there be, track, tracking those changes in your own document, alternatively, you can take a red pen and your paper copy and make notes.
But I definitely, I definitely would like to get the comments from the advisory board, and, and that way, we kind of know some of their sentiment, too, might make us.
Well, many of those are already in here.
I got you, but I mean, I think that there's a new one coming up there, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're already. Yeah, they've already, they've already accepted everything that's, that's in here. They didn't get into the weeds as much as we are right now with definitions and development standards.
Does this mean we have to go back to them?
No, no, they, um, they wanted to, they wanted, they only wanted you to go back to them if there was something really substantial in the, in the substance of the thing, the way we're treating density and zoning.
I don't think we're doing any of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's really been debated right now at the Advisory Group and the Commissioners is getting the land use plan adopted that you all recommend adoption for. So that's the main thing, but it has implications here because at the end of the day, those, these two things have to be reconciled, the land use plan. And so there's some things in this UDO that reflect the current land use plan that you all have recommended they approve. So you might see some of those, like, for example, the commercial design guidelines might get pulled out of there. That means that would require an alteration of the land use plan from the version you all have adopted. So we're trying to reconcile a few of those things. But I think for the most part, the UDO will stay intact. It's a matter of a couple of little pieces getting pulled out. If, if every, all the stakeholders collectively agreed, that's what it wants.
That, that's one of the things is, that is going back to the Advisory Group, the commercial standards. Ask them to, to provide input.
So I've got on my calendar that I'll, I'll probably just come in virtually for the next meeting. I wanted to be here for this first one, though.
Sure.
But February 22nd, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's at 7:00 PM.
Yep.
So I'll plan to attend that, and between now and then, I suspect we'll be communicating, I know, with you, Paul, and you can let the whole board know.
Sure. Since it's going to be a workshop without any cases on the 22nd, is anyone interested in having the meeting a little earlier?
Yes.
6:30, say? Is that a problem, Eric, for you?
No, the earlier, the better, that's great.
Carrie, is that a problem for you?
That's fine with me, too. I agree.
Okay, then, on the 22nd mark your calendars, and we'll hold a meeting at 6:30.
I'll make sure that we, since we've already published the calendar, I'll, I'll get with Jennifer about what we need to do to properly notice the change of time.
Okay.
Just because it's a public meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, you understand? So what do you, what do you guys feel? What's your, your feeling about how far we are to actually having something that you're comfortable with?
Well, I'm, I'm really comfortable with most of what's in here. I mean, I can see the need for some of the minor changes that we've discussed and some of the comments that I've made. I guess the most significant one is the handicap parking section, but other than that, I, I think this is pretty well on its way. I don't see it taking a, another month or, or two months to be able to. I think by the end of February or at least a March meeting, we should have this ready to present to the Commissioners. How do you all feel about that?
I agree.
A lot of my questions were answered and I felt comfortable.
So I think we're in good shape, Carrie.
So that would have us actually holding a hearing at your March meeting?
Yes.
The second March meeting?
Yeah, we can't, that's right, we, um, this is not.
Well.
I'm just thinking about if there's cases, other cases on the docket.
Yes, but it, it wouldn't, I don't think, encumber the agenda too badly if we just were to hold a vote on adopting a resolution to recommend to the Commissioners that, or let the Commissioners know that we've accepted the UDO. We could just have that one vote.
You're right, that is the, that is the intent.
That would certainly move things along a little more quickly.
I agree. Is that the March 8th meeting?
I'm thinking of that.
Me, too.
Right now, there's nothing on the docket for March 8th, like no cases.
Okay, well, all the better. I mean, how many can we get between now and then? There is a 30-day notice period, so.
There is. Right now, there's two that might have an application by the deadline, but either way, it should be rescheduled.
Yeah. I think, I think it's doable, Carrie.
So that's, and Eric, instead of like you and I were talking about potentially having a workshop and then holding the public hearing right after it, this is, um, holding the workshop, being done with the workshop on February 22nd, and then, um, holding the hearing on March 8th as a, a matter of process?
Yep. I'm adding it to my calendar. What, that March 8th meeting, would that be at 7:00 PM?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I wouldn't anticipate an overwhelming amount of people who are going to come up and question anything in here. I, I just don't see it.
Regardless, I'll be on, available online.
Okay.
Well, thanks, Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Eric, thank you for being there, even though I'm not, I feel kind of guilty that you drove all the way. You drove. And I got to be.
You keep pilling up, I'm just fine.
How far do you come?
I live up in Boone, so two and a half hours.
Oh, man.
I should probably hit the road, though.
Yeah.
So, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for taking the time to come and see us.
Yeah, you bet. Enjoyed it, it's good.
Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
Some.
Second? Motion made in second to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Seeing no opposition, the motion to adjourn the meeting is passed.